Evening, everyone. Welcome to this special budget work session. First order of business, pledge of the flag. Please join me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so at this point, I guess, Mark, I'll turn it over to you and your staff for the presentation.
All right, good evening, everyone. Tonight is the second budget meeting. Last Monday, the seventh, we reviewed the capital budget. Today, we're going to go over all of the various operating budgets. With that being said, I'll turn it over to Teri Hummel for her presentation.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to budget session number two. First of all, we're going to go through just an overview of the budget, what we're going to review this evening. And we'll talk a little bit about the budget process. I will review the budget totals by fund. I'm going to identify some unique items and reporting changes that happened in 2025. I have a review of the revenue and expenditure summary for 2025. We'll take a look at the fund balance and talk a little bit about why that's important. We'll look at a brief summary of the capital improvements plan for 2025 through 2029, and we'll talk a little bit about general information on the sewer fund and the next steps. Well, the budget process is not a one-day event. The budget is drafted under the direction of the township manager, and it is a coordinated effort by the management team. We begin in July with the capital improvements planning. In August, we move to the budget planning process. September, we actually meet with the, all directors meet with the township manager, and we review each budget by line item. So that work has already been done. When we get to October, we finalize the five-year capital improvements plan, which we reviewed last week in work session number one. We prepare the preliminary budget for review, and of course, we have three budget sessions that are set up for the public. In November, once the budget moves forward, the township manager is required to do a budget presentation that is scheduled for November 20th at 6:30 PM. And hopefully, we get to a final approval with the board of directors, board of supervisors on 12/12. Our totals by fund, for the general fund for 2025, the budget is $21,542,309. For liquid fuels, $866,675. This is a state allocated fund. It is for road improvements as well as traffic control signals. Subdivision Recreation Reserve Fund is a $5,000 budget. Petition Streetlight Fund is $100,000. The Capital Improvements Fund is $4213,044, and the Capital Improvements Fund does include debt service for the general fund. Stormwater water quality is listed at $36,000. The sewer fund has expenditures of $12,968,190, and other funds, which are minor funds or restrictive funds, total $8,100. I do have a note with the liquid fuels fund. The state decreased the 2025 allocation by 5%, and they actually anticipate reducing the allocation 2% per year for the next five years. So that will have an impact on our long-term road improvements. All total for the funds is $40,173,108. For any reporting updates for the 2025 budget, the general fund is balanced, but is balanced with the use of fund balance of $810,000. The municipal tax rate, we, is no, no changes this year. We calculated the budget with the 1.5 mil rate that currently stands. We have a conservative approach to our revenue calculations, and we do have the final funds available from the American Rescue Plan Act Fund available in the sewer fund to support our Yoffre contract services, and that amount is $438,000. For Capital Improvements Fund, as we spoke and talked about last week, we do have two completed projects in 2023 that we're still waiting on grant funding. We have a RACP grant of $3.5 million, and we have a PennDOT grant for Davie's Drive of $836,000. We do expect the $836,000 to come in in 2024, and the RACP grant to come in in 2025. And both of those items are important for our fund balance moving forward. 2025 improvements, we have a total of $7176,137, and that includes $4.1 million for the sewer fund. The debt service for this year includes the $200,000 payment, which is a loan from the sewer fund to the general fund for a land purchase. We had talked about that payback in one of our board meetings in May or June. We introduced that, that payment repayment program, and 2025 would be that first year of three years. The water quality fund, we have the East Tributary project is still on hold. We are waiting for a DEP permit, as we talked about last week. The West Tributary, we have general maintenance expenditures of $36,000 in that fund. For the sewer fund, we are experiencing increasing operating costs. Those costs are escalating much higher than inflationary rate, especially with our repairs and maintenance, maintenance as well as our chemical costs. Sewer utility rates for 2025, there is no proposed increase. And then the compensation plan updates. Across the board, we have a 3% increase for non-union employees. We have contract increases for Teamsters and police personnel according to their collective bargaining contract. We experienced a 17.4% increase in healthcare benefits this year and a 2% increase in Teamsters' healthcare benefits. The 3% increase for non-union employees, that is a proposed increase, and all increases are based on performance evaluation. Next, we have the revenue for the general fund. Our tax revenue continues to be 65.5% of our total budget. That includes real estate taxes as well as our other taxes. As you can see, other taxes amount to 49% of our total revenue coming in. Those taxes include real estate transfer taxes, earned income taxes, local services taxes, and mercantile and business privilege taxes. On the expenditure side, our expenditures, 51.95% of general fund expenditures are from our police and fire coverage. You can see the percentages of a total expenditure of $21,542,309 for all departments. Our budget notes by department, as I mentioned, there's no change in the municipal tax rate. For administration, we're experiencing a significant increase of 10.9%. That's coming from our health benefits and contract services. Finance has increased 10.8%. That's coming from personnel costs as well as our service fees. We have additional service fees with our banking institutions. We did add some additional security measures on all of our accounts, which has increased those costs, which we find necessary. For information technology, the department has an increase of 4.61%, and all of those items are recommended by our third-party vendor, Elevated MSP. Community development has an increase of 2.52%. Our police department increase is 5.46%, most are all personnel costs. Fire and rescue increase is 9.97% in the contract services. But I do want to mention that the annual capital contribution for this year is $147,000 less than 2024. For public works, the increase is 5.73%. We find that in personnel costs as well as our contract services. Parks and Recreation increases 6.26% and relate to personnel costs. And then just a reminder that we do have a transfer to capital, which includes our debt service and gaming revenue. And gaming revenue for this year is estimated, for 2025, is estimated at $1854,000. It's always a good time to review the property tax structure in our township. Our municipal tax for 2024, the tax rate was 1.5 mils. This is the only tax rate that's governed by the township. The last increase was 2018. And last year, of course, we had a tax decrease in 2024. There is no change for the proposed tax rate in 2025. Our county tax sits at 6.9 mils, and the last increase was 2022. Both the municipal tax and the county tax are billed together in February to our property owners. And finally, we have two school districts located in our township. The tax rates are typically adjusted annually, and those school taxes are billed in July to all of our property owners. For the general fund history, the fund balance by ordinance, the township is required to have 10% of the approved budget in reserves. For 2024, the required amount is $25,630. Our current revenues or our current reserves are in excess of $7.9 million. So we continue to have a healthy emergency fund, and those funds will be replenished when we receive our grant funding. Capital improvements Plan for 2025 through 2029, this is a five-year plan. Over the five years, we expect expenditures to be $29,121,74. Of that amount, 58.3% is for the sewer fund, for $17 million. We actually reviewed the capital improvements at the last work session, and our total for 2025 is $7.1 million. Next, for sewer fund, just a reminder of what our 2024 rates are. There are no changes to the rates proposed for 2025. We do bill about 8,600 customers per quarter, and our 2024 annual billing for sewer utility is $4546,452. As I mentioned earlier, we do have increasing operational costs, much higher than our inflationary rates for other expenditures. And due to the fact that we are a utility, we are, we do have continuous maintenance and capital improvements, and we do meet all permit and state operating requirements for that utility. And the last rate increases are listed on the bottom in red, increases in 2018, 2023, and 2024. And then finally, we always have a list of our potential variables. For revenue, of course, changes in economy, because we're so heavily relied on our other taxes coming from businesses in our area, that could affect our revenue for the township. Inflation seems to be holding steady, but prices certainly have not come down. Redevelopment projects have been slow this year, based on the fact that we have higher financing rates. Our real estate sales have been slower. Hopefully, they pick up next year. And then in revenue opportunities, we have our grant funding, which continues to be our best source of outside income. And we appreciate the work that our grant administrator does on a daily basis. And then we have our corporate financial support for those special events, especially through recreation, sounds of summer. We have quite a bit of corporate sponsorships in our area. For expenditures, our healthcare costs are included in 2025 budget. We have a post-retirement medical costs associated with our police department. We estimate that to be $185,000 in this budget, but we really have no idea what that cost is, depending on what the claims are. We have escalating costs and supply chain delays. We still seeing supply chain delays with some of our customized vehicles, especially our large public works vehicles. Some are ordered two months or two years in advance of when they're received. We talked a little bit about higher interest rates and long-term financing. We have the, the chance of an unfunded state mandate, which we have no control over, and then a catastrophic event. And that concludes my overview of the 2025 budget.
Pretty thorough presentation.
Excuse me.
Do you, great job, as always.
Do you want to pull up the proposed budget on the screen? Seventy-five page or seventy-two page?
I have one question from your presentation.
Yes.
The ending balance on the general fund is $7,009. Does that include the 3.5 million and the 895?
No, it does not.
We're going to be over $10 million.
That is correct.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks for asking that. I was thinking that when we went through there.
Is that one in office? It is. Proposed 2025 budget, it's the middle.
Got it.
Ready?
Ready.
So Teri, do you want to, we'll start with revenue since we have that up first. If you just want to highlight a couple of the things. Teri and I met throughout the entire process, and I'll let her explain. But we were really conservative with our revenues for 2025, mainly based on not knowing what the development and those types of functions are going to occur or not occur in 2025. So, Teri, if you want to go down through and maybe point out some of the highlights in the revenues, and then any question, if you want to dive deep, if the board wants to dive deeper into any, just stop us.
Most of the revenues are pretty much in line with what we did last year. We do have a decrease in the cable TV franchise funds that we are collecting. We're seeing a decrease there, and that is under licenses and permits, item number 321. Last year's budget was $428,000. This year is $384, anticipated for next year. On page three, under federal grants, item number 351, we have ARPA funding. Our final funds available from ARPA is $438,000. And you can see, in comparison to last year, we used over $1 million in the 2024 budget. So right there, you have a decrease of almost $600,000 in your revenues. The gaming revenue is listed under state shared revenue under item number 355. That does show a 3% increase over the expected revenue this year of $1.8 million, and we are on target for that $1.8 million. Under intergovernmental revenues for our local school districts, we have a slight increase in the COPSS and school agreement, and that agreement is a multi-year agreement through 2026. We, under community development, we did add additional revenue under building permits. 2024 budget was $900,000. We anticipate a budget of 2025 of $1 million. So that's a 10% increase there. Everything else is pretty steady, no major changes, for a total revenue budget of $21,542,309. And it is balanced based on the use of fund balance, which is $810,172. And if you just look at the two items, with ARPA having $600,000 less revenue in 2025, and we added $200,000 in, in paying back our debt to the sewer fund. So right there's $800,000 between those two items.
What was the first item again?
Is the ARPA funding, where we had $1 million in our budget last year, and this year, we have $400,000. So it's $600,000 difference in revenue. That's all, that's what we have left from the ARPA funding.
I have a question about the real estate transfer tax.
Yes.
The, we only got, here you're only going back like two, two, three years. Was that like significantly higher before?
Yes. We had, we had an excellent year in 2021. We had a commercial property that sold, which pushed that balance much, much higher than what we have had in the last two years. But we really haven't seen a much movement in real estate sales.
Right.
It's definitely lower the last two years.
For what? It's worth, 2024 will be Fallbrook Flats, I heard, just sold. That's the apartment complex on East Market Street. And I think the sell price was like $52 million. So we'll see a big jump for this year.
This year, yes.
That won't impact the budget we're talking about, but.
Any other questions on revenues?
Looks pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Just one other item I'll add to the, and if, Teri, you said this, I missed it, and I apologize, but we did increase the administration fee that we charged the sewer fund. So we did increase that this year as well. All right, on to expenses, general fund.
Okay, I'm just going to highlight a few things, because we could be here a while if we go line by line. Administration, we're seeing increases in our contract services. That includes the new cleaning contract as well as Paycom, which is our third-party vendor used for payroll processing. Administration is showing a 7.61%. Keep in mind, we have personnel cost increases as well as our medical insurance increase. That's pulling that higher.
So the trend is up pretty sharply from 2022 to 2025 for contract services.
Correct.
That's mainly because of the new building and the first cleaning service that we hired, to put it professionally, was not very good at all. So then we moved on to the current vendor, and we're probably paying what we should be paying because they're doing an adequate job.
Okay. In the finance department, our expenses are basically personnel costs. We do have some training and development budgeted for next year. And then, as I spoke, as I was speaking before, the service charges have significantly increased, and we actually have all of those included under the finance department.
All the contract service charges for?
Banking service charges.
Banking service.
Yeah, that includes our paying agents for our debt service. We added some security features on our bank accounts, different types of ACH blocks, which I think is important in this day and age to have those additional securities.
Where, where else would you think of putting them? Is there an IT budget that would do that?
We do have an IT budget, an ID, IT department, but I've never put, we've never coded the service charges there.
Because these fees come directly from the bank.
They're from the bank, so they are banking fees.
Correct.
I was thinking that was something that we put in on our side, but, okay.
No, 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 it's on the banking side.
No, that's good.
Yep. Tax collection, fees are based on our contract with our elected tax collector. Professional fees, based on contract auditing services. Of course, we have our legal services that we estimate. We have some engineering services in there. Nothing, it's, it's flat from last year. Information management systems are up 4.61%. And then our police department, most of those increases are based on personnel costs, insurance costs. Uniform costs are up. They're up in all departments. Any questions on police? The fire department?
It's just tough picking out when you see a large percentage, and then you see a small dollar amount, it doesn't matter.
Correct. Well, that's, that's correct.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm trying to parse through it.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Okay, sorry.
The fire department, we are seeing an increase in the contract services that was proposed from Yoffre. We have our fire unfunded pension liability, which is standard. That's the same as last year and was just billed for this year. And of course, we have the Fire Relief Association, and that's an in-and-out. We have, that's a state-funded allocation we received. There's $97,000 in our revenues, and then $97,000 comes out of our fire expenditures. That's a pass-through. We no longer have EMS, so on to community development. No major changes in community development. And we did base all of our personnel costs on full staffing. So we still have some vacancies, but we expect those to be filled for 2025. The final year for the comprehensive plan is included under community development, and that cost is $124,072, slightly less than our budget from 2024. And public works. General services, fairly flat, 2.5% increase. Most of that is in our personnel costs, of course. Our vehicle rental contract is slightly higher because we're replacing vehicles, newer vehicles. We're in a five-year, six-year cycle on that contract. We have street cleaning, snow and ice removal, signs and lines for traffic, sidewalks and curbs, all very basic allocations for salaries and overtime, storm sewers, highway maintenance, all very reasonable. Township buildings, slightly higher than last year. Township buildings, slightly higher than last year. Most of that coming from our electric and expected usage for our gas here in the building. Our parks maintenance is up and we have additional contract services in our parks maintenance, both for the cleaning of the restrooms and for the Springins Berry Park. And also we added contract services for trees trimming and removal where necessary.
That one's a pretty significant jump.
Parks and ma, yeah, parks maintenance, item number four four, yes.
Contract services.
Contract services, again, as Terry said, that a lot of that is the bathroom cleaning and we have a tree issue in this park as far as trees dying. And we're not aware of it till one blew over in that.
I have that problem too.
So we have, those two are the main drivers of that significant increase.
Okay, parks and recreation department experiences six point two six percent increase over last year. That's personnel costs. We now have two full-time employees in that department. Program services include all of our events, recreation classes, the summer program, sounds of summer. And then their repairs and maintenance is increased this year. We added a thirty thousand dollar expenditure for park inspections.
And that's the playground equipment being inspected by a certified inspector.
And the final, final items, contributions, we still make a contribution, annual contribution to the Martin Library for thirty-seven thousand dollars. We have all of our liability insurances. Our fidelity bonds are included under insurances, item number four eighty-six. Other items include postage and miscellaneous items. And then we have our inter-company transfers, inter-fund transfers, I should say, to the capital improvements fund as well as the MS four stormwater fund. And our total expenditures are twenty-one million, five hundred forty-two thousand, three hundred and nine dollars for the general fund.
Not a lot of wiggle room, is there?
No, and we have gone through line item by line item. Make sure that we've budgeted what we need. And it adds up very quickly.
Questions?
We're all to be complimented, every department head, Terry, Mark, you do a great job.
All right, liquid fuels.
Do you want to review each one? Okay, liquid fuels is a state allocation we receive from PennDOT. We have income coming in both from that allocation as well as our interest earnings from investments. We've got a total of eight hundred sixty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars in revenue. And we balance that with our expenditures. Majority of our expenditures come from traffic signal control, our street lighting. And then we have our road construction contract services, which are our paving projects.
How, how has the transition to new signal company gone?
I'll speak and Denny can speak if he wants to. I think it was eye-opening, to be frank, of the stuff over the years that had not been maintained, I guess, to manufacture specs, I'll put it. So we spent a tremendous amount of money this year just getting everything in order. But I, I'm very pleased, very pleased.
I've noticed some improvements in the signals along the Mount Zion Road corridor. Is that all fixed yet or is it?
I believe so. I saw them in the cabinet at Market Street, which that's part of the system. Eastern Boulevard to Pleasant Valley Roads, all one system. I saw them in the cabinet the other day, so Denny's shaking his head, so I assume everything's up in order. But that corridor alone, we spent a tremendous amount of money, tremendous amount of money out of, out of the liquid fuels this year. Does that answer your question, Mr. Bishop?
Yes, that, I, yeah. So I assume, what does that mean that maintenance going forward, once things are up to snuff, will kind of settle down?
It should. A lot of the big-ticket items were vehicle detection, so loops in the roadways, which are expensive to put in, but should last for quite some time. Preemption for the emergency vehicles, that wasn't working in probably half of our intersections. That's expensive, so they do inspections, preventative maintenance inspections twice a year, this new contract. So I think they're doing the second inspections now. So we should find out shortly if, because I believe they caught every, or they fixed everything or most everything in the first round, so.
All right, the next fund is the subdivision recreation reserve fund. This is a restricted fund. All of the funding for this particular fund comes from our new construction and development fees from our developers. And the only thing that we have in here is the interest earnings from our current balance of the fund. Nothing planned at this time and nothing that we're aware of that will be coming through for next year. Petition streetlights fund, this is a tax fund.
Before you move on, is this where, if the, if the project moves forward at, um, Market and Mount Zion, the, would that be paid into that fund?
Correct, fee in lieu of.
Right.
All right, next we have the petition streetlight fund. This is a tax fund and this is just to pay for electricity, contract services and the maintenance of those lights. Hundred thousand dollars income, hundred thousand dollars in expenses. The American Rescue Plan Act Fund, the ARPA funding, we have just a small amount of revenue for interest earnings, depending on when the funds are transferred for the, for next year for, to, to support the fire services. And we expect four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars to be moved to the general fund revenues. Capital improvements Fund, we talked in length last week about this particular fund and the items that were included in the fund from all of the departments. We have four million, two hundred thirteen thousand and forty-four dollars in that account. And that does include our debt service, which includes the debt service for the building and debt service from the previous general fund loan. Stormwater Reserve Fund is a restricted fund that only includes interest earnings from the current fund balance. No maintenance or items listed under expenditures. Shank Trust Fund is a restricted fund. We record interest earnings only in that fund. We do not anticipate any maintenance or expenditures for that particular fund for next year. We have the library fund, it's a restricted fund and we have interest earnings calculated based on the fund balance. No expenditures for that particular fund. The water quality MS four fund, we have thirty-six thousand dollars expected in expenditures, which are maintenance items listed for the wastewater treatment West Tributary Project. And that's based on our project that was completed in twenty twenty-two. And then finally, we have the sewer fund. Sewer fund right now has just over ten million dollars listed. And we have expenditures of over, just under thirteen million. But we do have a non-cash item of depreciation that comes out of there of more than three point eight million dollars, I believe. And you'll see the expenditures for wastewater treatment definitely are up in categories of our chemicals, treatment chemicals, repairs and maintenance.
We're on page fifty-six on the bottom right. Fifty-six, fifty-seven.
Questions?
So I, I didn't, I don't know where it is in the budget, but how, how are we with the, the sewage haulers? I know we had some questions about that revenue for a while.
The sewage what?
Couple of.
The.
The haulers.
Truck waste.
Oh, the.
The septage and grease, that's on page.
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four.
Under charges for services, item three sixty. Treatment haulers, we have exactly the same amount of revenue recorded for next year. And then we increased the grease truck waste from fifty-five thousand dollar budget this year to seventy-five thousand dollars next year. So we do anticipate an increase.
You have a more specific question?
Are we getting our fair share of that stuff?
Compared to recent years, yes. Compared to a decade ago, no. A lot, a lot more wastewater treatment plants got into the business. So we have more competition now than we did a decade or two ago. But it is trending similarly over the last couple of years.
So we had put in fog with an anticipation of some fairly decent revenue from that. Are we anywhere close to where we need to be?
Where we need to be and where we were hoping we would be, I, I look at it as two different things. Where I was hoping we would be, we're nowhere near close. And there's factors out of our control that are dictating.
Somebody else open up a plant?
There's a.
And start accepting all, a lot of the stuff that we thought we were gonna get.
Right, so until that ceases, I think we'll be in this seventy-five thousand dollars a year range. It's my opinion. I don't know if Denny has a different opinion or not. Do you want to speak into the microphone so Mr. Bishop can hear that?
Do we need a better salesperson in that department or something?
I was just gonna ask that. Do we need a marketing program to?
I would be terribly interested to see what a marketing program for hauled grease would be, but if you have any ideas, let me know, that would be just great.
Other questions? Okay, what page are we on now?
That probably does it for the sewer fund. Because there's tons of line items in the sewer fund, but it's more or less all the same because of three, four different divisions. But Terry's message of chemicals and maintenance and repair carries through throughout the majority of the sewer fund. But then, if there aren't any further questions on the sewer fund, then we're on to the development authority.
The development authority, we record interest income on the current fund balance. And the only expenditures that the development authority has are the required audit, annual audit fees and stenographer fees for the annual meeting.
But does it, doesn't it?
That covers our seventy-page budget.
And we're done in less than an hour. Any other questions? Any comments from anybody in the peanut gallery? Okay, so the obligatory public comments, I don't see any publics on Zoom. Anybody hiding back there?
Well, that was gonna be my next question to the chairman, do we need to meet Wednesday?
Not in my mind. Mr. Bishop, do you want to meet on Wednesday?
Which bar?
Yours.
I, I think we're good on the budget, I, I'm, I'm fine. I mean, the only other thing that I'm still a little concerned about, that we don't have any control over, is exactly if there's gonna be any changes coming from the Alpha. I guess we'll find that out tomorrow. But I understand they have a, a new union contract, but you don't know what it is. But we do get to participate in funding it. Manchester has a new meeting contract.
Yes. All right.
I just want to say thank you to Angel for taking care of her IT for the last two meetings, so thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.